Would you please remain standing for a moment? One of our former board members passed away a few days ago, Mr. Bill Mayer. So would you please stand in here in honor of his memory, please? Thank you.
Will call. Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistow.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Citizens' comments?
I have no comment cards this evening.
Southmoreland Primary Center Student Achievement Report.
Mr. Clare is here with the report of SPC and how they performed last year academically. So I'd invite you down front. We'll lower the screen and let Dan get started.
I guess I'm going to use the mic even though you guys could probably hear me. Good evening. I'm Dan Clare. I'm the Director of Federal Programs and Primary Center and Elementary Principal K through 4. And I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about Southmoreland Primary Center, our K in 1 school in the Southmoreland School District. I'm very excited to announce that we've won for the third year in a row recognition as a model school in professional learning communities. It's a really nice thing to be recognized for that. Every year we compete for the National to Four Award, which is given to three schools who exemplify those traits. We apply every year. We've been close. In fact, every year I get a letter from Jeffrey Jones, who is the CEO of the company, who says, "We're watching you." And I send him one back that says, "I'm not done trying." I'm sure he's expecting his letter soon. So we will continue to try to be the best at what we do. But that's good to be recognized. And I want to talk to you a little bit about our programs. First of all, a little bit about us. Southmoreland Primary Center has 303 students in grades K and 1, 25 educators, including itinerants and paraprofessionals. We are located in Alverton, PA, which is 45 minutes south of Pittsburgh. We are a rural school. 58% of our students are economically disadvantaged, and we are a school-wide Title I program. So I want to talk to you about reading. This is a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. Not that math doesn't matter, but we really focus a lot of attention on making sure that kids are proficient readers. This is a big challenge because reading is really a tough thing to learn. Research tells us that by the end of 3rd grade, going into 4th grade, you go from learning to read to reading to learn, meaning that you're done learning how to do those things, and now your emphasis is on being able to read on your own and make decisions about what you've read. That's a big jump, and we need our kids to be able to make it. So we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that that happens. This is a scatter plot chart that we use to tell us how we're doing. The green lines that you see tell us where we want our kids to be. We want to be in the upper right-hand quadrant, and that's where we really have most of our students. Those who are in the lower left-hand quadrant are kids who are not making a lot of growth, and they're struggling with reading. In the upper left-hand quadrant, that's students who are really reading well but aren't making as much growth as we would want in the course of a year. The kids in the far-right quadrant, low achievement and high growth means that they were struggling to read, and they're getting better at it this year. And then in the upper-right-hand quadrant, that means those are students who are achieving at a high level and growing. So we want to see our kids in that upper-right-hand quadrant. We spent some time in the past talking about what we do for kids who are struggling with achievement and growth. I want to talk about what we do for kids who are already getting it. And that was a question we had to ask ourselves. We do a lot to make sure that if you're struggling with reading, there are some things that we can do to make you more successful. There are lots of strategies and lots of research for that. But what happens if you come in and you're already a good reader? What do you do? If everybody's reading the story and you could read it on your own Sunday night, you're going to read it four more times perhaps. And maybe you'll become disinterested or disconnected from your learning. So fortunately, I work with some really smart people. And one of the things they said to me is, "Well, we need to be writing more. We need our kids to write more, to read things and talk about their experiences and reflect on what they've read and try to connect to it with writing." Like what happened in the story is something that I can understand or something that I did similarly. Our character goes on a trip. Well, I went on a trip once, and this is what I did. And start making those connections between what our characters do and what we do and try to understand our story through that context. So our teachers in both grade levels said, "Hey, we really need to commit to this. We need to figure it out." And I wasn't really sure how to do that. I said, "Well, I taught English, but I taught high school, guys. I don't know. How do we teach it this way?" And they said, "We think we've got some strategies for that, but we need to start by saying it's not going to be something that weighs against student learning. It's not going to be graded. We don't want to do that. We just want to practice." Each quarter, then, I said, "I want you to do one writing assessment, and we're just going to take a look at how we do. We're going to talk to kids about what they do well, and we're going to see where they struggle." This is 1st grade's performance. Let me show you that as well. And you can see in the upper-right-hand quadrant, lots of achievement and growth. In the lower-left-hand quadrant, the smaller the dot, the fewer the number of kids, so those are smaller numbers. High achievement, low growth in the upper-left-hand quarter. We're doing more writing in 1st grade, and kindergarten did a great job of preparing them. So 1st grade's test this year is to make sure that those guys who are moving into the district, who are struggling with reading, are doing better. But we're committed to working on writing. We think that that's going to make our kids better thinkers and make them more interested in what they read. You reflect on what you read, and then you think about it in your own way. What does this mean to me? And not just, "What are the questions on the test? And I remember this character went to this place, or this character had this experience. What does it mean to me?" So to do that, we work on our comprehensive plan each year. These are the things that we're proud of. We're recognized as a 2016 National to Four School Award nominee. We increase professional relationships and performance between the school and pre-K providers. We work really well with all of our local pre-K providers. Mr. Huff is here with our school, the Primary Center, and some of the other kindergarten team. Do an amazing job connecting with them and talking to them about what we're going to be doing in kindergarten so that our pre-K providers can start preparing kids for that. They know what we're going to be working on, and we share with them resources and kind of the schedule of what we want to teach and how we're going to teach it so that when kids come in from those programs, they're familiar with what we're about to do. Collaboration and collective responsibility for learning of students and adults. We work together. That is one of the most exceptional places I've ever been in terms of teachers working together to make others better and make kids more successful. Increased parent and community involvement in the schools through targeted activities and communications. We have parents who come in and volunteer to do lunch duty and work with our kids to help to open things. If you ever see me in there, you'll find that I'm usually the guy who has stuff on my tie. There are others who are smarter. They use scissors and have ways to open things. I pull it, it's all over my clothes, but our parents and teachers are really great at helping our kids to open things. That's hard for them when they're little to pull those things apart, and that can slow them down as they're trying to enjoy their lunches. So we have parents who volunteer to do that, and teachers help to monitor that as well. Successful implementation of guided reading and Daily Five at SPC. A few years ago, I talked to you about this. Daily Five is a teaching model. It's a structure for us to allow kids to practice and then have time with their teachers individually on their reading level. So it's not just, "Here's the book. Everybody's going to read it, and I hope you get it." Everybody's working on that basal, the story that we want everyone to know, but when you go to practice, it's with something on your level. So you're not frustrated, and often on your interest level, too, something you want to read about. And accomplishment number six, instituted itinerant student recognitions as part of our belief in positive student support. I have to tip my cap to Dr. Monar. He brought this up a couple of years ago, saying that we wanted to recognize students. That's an important component. But if you're not a great academician, maybe you're a great artist, maybe you're a great musician, maybe you're really gifted as an athlete, or maybe you're a really great reader. How do we recognize you? So in addition to giving Super Scotty Student Awards to students monthly, we also recognize those students in music, art, and PE and library so that they get noticed as well. And if you come into the school, you'll see that each month we have pictures of those guys who are being recognized for those skills. So we think that's an important quality for our kids to recognize. Our concerns, as I mentioned, guided writing. We had to work it in. And one of the things that teachers will tell you is, "When are we supposed to do that? We've got 19 things that we're trying to do today. Now you want me to fit writing in? It has to be the genius of and. It can't be the tyranny of all. We can't say, "Well, something's got to go." We have to find a way to fit it naturally. And so teachers were tasked with trying to find ways to do that without taking something else away because everything's important. I mean, name something in reading that you don't think you should be doing. So that was a challenge for them. And again, I have to give credit where credit is due. I couldn't tell them where they could fit it or how to fit it. I let them tell me. I said, "Here's the task. Guys, how would we do that? What would that look like?" And they would say, "Well, let us think about it." And then somebody would come back to me, "Well, we could do it this way." And somebody else would go, "Well, yeah, and then we could do this." And the next thing you know, we've got a plan. And then we're going to implement that plan and see how it goes. But we're going to do it together. If it works, wonderful. We're going to keep on doing what we're doing. And if it doesn't, we're going to walk back together and go, "Well, that wasn't so great. We'll try something else." So this year, we wanted to work on guided writing as a component of our language arts curriculum, really build on what we had started. And concern, too, was our kids would arrive at about 8:30, and if you arrived at 8:30, you would sit in the cafeteria or the gymnasium from 8:30 to 9:10. That is a really long time for kids, especially little kids in our building, to sit. Our cafeteria is small. If you've been in SPC's cafeteria, it's pretty small. And seating was really reserved for kids who were eating breakfast. So if you weren't eating breakfast, you were sitting in your class lines. You'd be sitting on a floor for a long time. I'm not real good at sitting still, and I'm 45. So I'm not sure how a five- or six-year-old would feel comfortable doing that. And for years, my teachers say, "We've got to do something. We can't have them sitting there." But it's difficult to come up with a plan because not everybody's there at 8:30. Kids are coming in at a staggered arrival. And so we said, "Jeez, you know." We tried doing some programs. That was one of the things that we tried to do, having kids go out to computer or to the library, or even doing some games with teachers. But again, if you arrived early, you got the benefit. If you came later, just based on where your bus run was, you didn't get to do it. And that wasn't very equitable or fair. So we talked and talked and talked about how to fix it. And finally, we just decided, maybe the issue isn't what we do with the time, it's when we arrive. If we could compress that time a little bit and have kids come a little bit later, they wouldn't have to sit so long, and we wouldn't have to select only these guys get to do these things because they come early, and these guys who can't help with them, their bus arrives, don't get to do that. So it took some work. Thank you to Charlie, who helped us to do that, to rearrange that. And we took 15 minutes and pushed that back so the kids aren't waiting so long to arrive. That was a real concern. And let me say academically, too, 40 minutes of sitting in a loud cafeteria and then say, "Okay, time to study." I don't know how good that was academically for our kids. So to address these two big concerns at the Primary Center, I want to show you what we've been working on. So what does this mean? As I said, it means that we needed to increase our growth of our students who are proficient, and we needed to assist those who are already on level to assist with that growth. And we have good systems in place to support students who need more. We have not been strong in increasing on-level student reading. So that's why we added the writing component. And these are the details of what we wanted to do, and I won't bore you with reading them. I'm going to show you what it looks like. This is kindergarten writing. And I don't know how many of you remember what kindergarten was like. I have a vague recollection now. The longer I'm away from it, the harder it is to remember. I seem to remember being in the principal's office more than anything. What I don't remember doing is writing this. These are essays that students wrote about each of these presidents that they looked at. And those are complete sentences with capitalization and periods, and amazing. And these are just two examples. I'm going to show you another set. And just, it's interesting. One of them says, "He was a teacher for the blind in New York. He served two non-consecutive terms. He's on the $1,000 bill." I didn't know any of that. Right there, I went, "What? Okay. Go ahead, Grover Cleveland." That's why you've got two pictures. Yeah, who knew, right? Kindergarten knew. And then, "Graduated from Harvard, oldest president elected, wealthiest president elected." I mean, they really spent some time writing and looking into who each of these guys were, and by writing it, you're likely to remember it. So in addition to practicing our writing skills, guess what? We know a lot about our presidents now. So kindergartners knew more about Grover Cleveland than I did. I'm kind of sheepishly admitting that, but I'm also proud that our kids knew that, and I had to learn it from them. In 1st grade, this is some writing that we did about Green Eggs and Ham and Dr. Seuss. And you can see, they kind of get a little bit further along, almost a paragraph form. "I like to read the books that I like Dr. Seuss. I love to read them. His books are funny. I think Dr. Seuss's books are the best." We're starting to put together some paragraphs now, and they're starting to not just be, "I like and I want." They're starting to be a little bit more complicated and a little bit more thoughtful. "My favorite Batman book is when he saved all the city from Mr. Freeze and Frostbite." So here's a student who's talking about what he read, my favorite one. I think that's pretty neat. Writing in 1st grade, filling up the page. Amazing. Again, when I was looking back on my own experiences, I think we were still trying to get letters and sounds at the end of 1st grade and letters. So that's a far cry. We're allowing kids to really push their limits in their thinking as far as writing goes. And then our second challenge was trying to correct the arrival time and make it a little bit better for our students. And that's some of our school climate. This is a letter I sent home on August 7th with Mr. Mash, my partner. "For many years, students arriving at SPC and SES sat in the gym or cafeteria prior to reporting to homerooms at 9:10. For early-arriving students, this meant sitting for a very long time. Many things have been tried to improve this weight for our students, but we did not feel that those solutions were what were best for them. To shorten this weight, we're opening school for students at 8:45." So we talked about this and talked about it and tried all kinds of things. I'd love to say our first effort was our best one. Oh, we came up with a solution, and it's going to be handing passes out and sending kids to different places in the school. That wasn't effective. We tried a lot of things. Ultimately, though, our goal is always to try to make things better for our kids. We didn't want them to sit so long in a loud place and then try to start their day. And we think this has been a pretty effective solution to that problem. And then I shared that not only with our parents, but I talked about with our students in my presentation that I did with them at the beginning of the year. So SPC may be small, and we don't have some of the comparative data that everybody else does. We don't take PSSAs, and sometimes it's hard for me to tell you our story through numbers because our numbers are just our numbers. We're not really looking at anybody else. But in some ways, I think that's even more difficult. Nowhere to hide when they're your own numbers. They're your data, and you need to deal with them. So I'm really proud of the people that I work with. They're excellent, and they are very driven to making sure that kids get the best that we can provide to them. We work really hard at it, and I hope that you are satisfied with the product that you see when you come there. I know every time I walk in there, one of the things I see is a lot of smiling kids. And that's a great measurement for me. I want to see kids who are smiling. And usually, they have something funny to tell me, and they also like to wipe things on my dress pants. But that's part of the job. You've got to be cool with that. But what a wonderful place to go. If you don't get to go up there very often, I encourage you to come up there. We always tell you, "Come." Please do. And if you have children who are there, or if you have grandchildren who are there, stop in. I think that my teachers like to see you, and I know the kids would like to see you, too. At this time, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. "All by myself." Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.